Again, thank you all for coming out. I just wanted to kind of recognize, thanks to Wiggs Family Restaurant, Cokie Swamp Barbecue, Backdraft Barbecue. Thank our hosts, Randy Stallins and Tracy Stallins. Thank you all so much for sponsoring this. We greatly appreciate it. Freddie, as you look around, I mean, as you can tell, you are greatly loved and thought a lot of in this community. We support you. We know that Southern Ash County especially faces a lot of growing hurdles in the very near future. We've got a lot of people here. I want to recognize, we got the Mayor of Middlesex, Lou Harvey, the Mayor of Bailey, Owen Strickland. We've got the Mayor of Spring Hope, right here Kyle Pritchard, correct? Thank you all. Kyle, if you don't mind, will you come up and just kind of give a rundown of where Spring Hope is? Any concerns, any needs, anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for inviting me out. Mr. Howell, thank you for inviting me. I appreciate that. And when I got the phone call and the invite to come out here, it was really unique and interesting in a sense. He said, "I want you to come out here and tell me about Spring Hope. I want you to come and talk to me and talk to my visitors and patrons about your town," which says a lot. He wants to hear about my town. He didn't want me to just come here and listen to him talk about what he's planning for our future. He wants to listen, and I can tell that that's a leader that's going to get involved, and he's going to make his mission our mission. And I can really tell and appreciate that. So, a quick round of applause. Thank you for having us here to speak. So, I'll jump right in. The thing I was also really excited about when I got the invite is he said, "Hey, you know, everybody's going to speak and give great updates about their town, their community or whatnot. The other mayors are going to speak." And I was really looking forward. I've looked up to Lou Harvey and the great things he's doing in Middlesex. And I was like, "Great. I'm going to get to come and sit down and listen to everything they're doing. Great. And then I can take it back and use it in Spring Hope." I was very excited. And then, when he told me the time, he said 6:00 to 8:30. I've got a planning board meeting at the town. We've got a 33-home new subdivision that wants to come to Spring Hope. Average price, half a million dollars on the houses. But I was looking forward to hearing everything that they had to say about the great things happening there. But now, I've gotten kicked up to be the first one speaking. And so, of course, I'm nervous being up here in the front of the line. But I'll go ahead and kind of tell you all a little bit about Spring Hope and where we've gone in the last couple of years. I've only been the mayor there two years. And in the past couple of years, we've gotten 300 homes in the pipeline, either under construction, sold with homeowners moved in them, or even in just the development, the design phase. As tonight, we have 33 more. We've got infrastructure projects that have already happened. We've got a total of $6.7 million in infrastructure funds just in the past two years to spend on water, wastewater treatment plant, supply, water towers, pumps, et cetera. And so, we're also not only repairing what we have, but we're also planning for that growth. We want to make sure that when our infrastructure gets taxed by these new residents and citizens moving in, that it's ready to sustain that. And so, we're really putting a tremendous amount of focus on our infrastructure, also including roads and sidewalks. We also want to look at expanding our city limits as far as voluntary annexation. If someone wants to come onto our water or sewer or into the city limits. That's very appealing to developers. And we've been fortunate that the developers that have come have voluntary annexed into the city limits. But we're also focusing on extending our water and sewer into the surrounding ETJ. So, as developers come along and they're interested in that land in the county, in our ETJ, they can tie into our water. And so, we've got it extended to Bass Sausage. So, we got the grant money to extend that out to Bass Sausage. So, we're making progress that way. That's going to put us almost over to the old Masonite plant. Many of you may remember that old Masonite plant. It'd be great if we could get there. They've got natural gas right there. We could get natural gas piped into town, cut everybody's gas bill in half. And so, there's a tremendous amount of infrastructure also dealing, not with just the water and sewer in town, but outside and expansion. We're talking about expanding over 64 with another water tower on the other side of 64 from where the new Bojangles and the Duckthru are for commercial development in that direction. So, there's a tremendous amount of planning that we are making sure that we are keeping the horse in front of the cart. That's a very hard task to do when developers are really coming your way. And so, focusing on the infrastructure, but then also focusing on what's going to fill all these houses and what's going to give these people jobs and what's going to give these people a quality of life that they're going to enjoy. And so, then you have to turn to the economy. And so, the team in Spring Hope really did a great job at creating an economic generator. They've been able to pull off the facilitation of assembling a studio, a movie studio, where movies will be filmed actually in Spring Hope. They already have movies that have been filmed in Spring Hope. They won't be movies about Spring Hope. It's just a production studio where they'll produce films. Example, the one that they filmed most recently actually took place in Tokyo, even though it was filmed right in Spring Hope. So, you know, you look at the infrastructure, you look at the growth, and then you have to create the growth that you want. And you create the growth that you want by creating the economy that that growth needs. And so, we're really focusing on a plan and making sure that we're charting it out the way that the residents want to go. And we've implemented such a great communication structure to get that two-way communication back and forth from the residents and the business owners and the developers. Right now, we're working with North Carolina Commerce. We're working on a town branding and vision project where we're bringing all of these heirs' properties to the table. That's something you see a lot of times in downtowns, is the third and fourth generation heirs of the buildings. They just won't do anything with them, maybe because they don't know, or they've got five sisters to fight over it for, right? And so, we're using our resources at the state and the county level to try to kind of herd these things together and kind of herd them to a head in the right direction. And so, it's more than just the tedious day-in-and-day-out work. And a lot of it is the bigger picture, bigger vision things. And then, the team behind it that turn all of that into reality. But as far as where Spring Hope is today and where it was two years ago, it's a complete total difference in the quality of life, the water quality, the infrastructure, the town system. We doubled our budget in two years, okay? So, we went from having no internal public works department. We created our own public works department. We used to outsource that out to EnviroLink. They were doing a terrible job. We always got complaints, always having issues with our water. We created our own public works department inside the town of Spring Hope. It immediately doubled the town's budget. Now, we handle all of that ourselves. Complaints have just gone to zero. And as far as the maintenance and upkeep, we're out there exercising the valves. We're checking on the technology, connecting to the pumps, monitoring everything remotely, and just constantly doing those preventative measures. And so, infrastructure and economic vision planning and growth is really where I've spent a bulk of my time. And, you know, I look, I tell them, I really am upset that I didn't get to listen to them because whether y'all believe it or not, you know, especially, I do look, and I do watch, and I do learn from what y'all are doing. And so, a lot of the stuff that I'm focusing on and talking about, it's stuff I've learned from people that are doing it in front of me that I'm learning it from. So, I appreciate you all letting me speak tonight. And again, I really commend Mr. Howell for making this event about us sharing our success stories and sharing positive things and not necessarily talking about the bad things. We all need $100 million for all new pipes. But it feels so good, and it's so nice to be around a leader that encourages positive communications and positive talk. It's very uplifting, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you all for having me out.
And the reason we're using a mic is because the TV station is here, WHIG out of Rocky Mountain. This is going to be broadcast later. What you're seeing is just a peek into the leadership style of Freddie, okay? Freddie is the type of guy that has called on the mayor in Bailey, the mayor in Middlesex, the mayor in Spring Hope, to recruit ideas to make life better in Southern Ash County, to make Southern Ash County a better place to live, work, and raise a family. That's a leadership quality, to reach out to these people across the southern end of the county to who might need help addressing some issues. Mayor Lou Harvey, would you like to come up and share a few things? Or Owen? Okay, Owen? And me and Owen, we kind of grew up together, went to school together. Mayor, Mayor Strickland?
Appreciate you. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Great. Freddie, I want to explain to you how appreciative I am of how you've treated me since I decided to run for mayor. Being a new mayor in the town of Bailey, you know, it's much appreciated when you pick the phone up and you call me, like you did earlier today. I hadn't told him I was going to be here. I was already going to be here, but he asked. He told me what he would like. It's very helpful when someone does that. That's what you're, in my opinion, that's what you're supposed to do, being in his position. That's what I tried to do when I ran. But I want to tell you how much I appreciate you.
Appreciate you being here.
And just a little bit about myself. I was a probation officer for 12 years in Guilford County. So, I beat the streets for 12 years rounding up the worst of the worst. So, I know a little bit about law enforcement. No, we weren't law enforcement officers. Matter of fact, if they would ask today and they say, "Oh, well, probation officer, that's not a law enforcement officer." Okay, that's perfectly fine. We were very, very dysfunctional when it came to sorts of things like that. We were always, we were always taken care of two items. Putting people in jail and trying to get people off of drugs, trying to get people off of the criminal acts they were doing. So, I did that for a while. I managed a contract for PTI Airport. That airport is 750 acres. A friend of mine just happens to live about three and a half miles from here. And he ran public works essentially for PTI Airport. I'm going to call on him this next month, and he's going to be a special advisor to the mayor, so I can then ask him what's going on. You know, what does this mean? What does that mean? Because I don't have a specialty in sewer and water and pipes and pumps and things like that, but he does. So, I'm not, I'm willing to ask someone else. I've got people that I'm going to ask for those things. A little bit about the way Bailey's operating. I'm in the office nearly every day of the week because that's the way I would like to do my job as mayor. We, I do not, I'm not the administrator like Lou Harvey is. But I have an administrator. Our administrator talks to me every day. This morning, I get a phone call, there's an issue. We act on that issue, and that issue is addressed by lunchtime. By EnviroLink, no less. EnviroLink, as Mayor Pritchard said, EnviroLink, a lot of towns leaves a lot to be desired. But the fact of the matter is, I'm going to be in that office, and I'm going to be holding their feet to the fire because they contract to us. We pay them. Our citizens pay them. And we're going to make sure that they do the right thing. Bailey is, all these towns along the 264 corridor are going to grow. We don't have a choice. It's going to happen. It has to happen the right way, and it has, we have to protect the livelihoods and lives of the people that live in the southern end of Ash County. Development is going to come, but it's going to run over you if you're not ready for it. And I think with my help and Mayor Lewis's help and Mayor Pritchard's help, I think Freddie could do a great job for the southern end of Ash County. That's why, that's one reason I'm here. I am in a position where I have to work with whoever wins. But bottom line is, I want to, I like somebody that calls me and asks me, "How's things going? What do you need? This is, you know, this is what we're doing. Would you like to be involved?" That's the way to operate as far as I'm concerned. I appreciate you inviting me. I appreciate the chance to be here. Bailey is, we're going to get off the sewer moratorium, ladies and gentlemen. It's going to happen because I'm going to do the things that I need to do to make sure that money comes to Bailey to get off of it. We've got a lot sitting there, but it's never going to be enough, especially considering we have to ship it somewhere else. So, we are going to get off that sewer moratorium, and we're going to take care of Bailey. And anything that Mayor Lewis needs, any things that Mayor Pritchard needs, all they've got to do is pick the phone up and call me because I'm going to be in the office and I'm going to be working. Because that's the way I feel like a mayor needs to be in any town, much less a small town. But I thank you all very much, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, several months ago, back in the spring, Freddie came to the house. He said, "JP, I want to talk to you about running for commissioner." He's like, "What are some of the biggest things that you know of that need addressing?" And I said, "Man, let me tell you something. The public has no idea of the critical issues that public safety is facing, especially in Southern Ash County, but across the county." I had a neighbor pass away as a result of EMS not being readily available in the southern end of the county. I believe that day, that rescue squad responded from Red Oak. Folks, that's unacceptable. We all pay the same tax rate down here as people in Rocky Mountain. And I'm not jabbing at Rocky Mountain. I'm not. This is county-wide. This is going on county-wide. And a lot of people don't understand this until they pick the phone up and call 911, and they say, "Look, I need a deputy sheriff. I need a rescue squad." I'm going to tell you, me and Sheriff Stone worked together for years on the highway patrol. I'm telling you right now, we've got the best sheriff in my lifetime. And I'm proud to call you a friend. I know you're doing the best that you can do with the resources that the county have given you. And I want you to know, you're in a room full of people that support you and appreciate the job that you do. Mayor, Lou Harvey, would you like to come and share anything with the crowd about growth ideas or anything about Middlesex?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for being here in Middlesex tonight. And I'd like to thank Freddie for giving me the opportunity to stand before you. There is a lot going on. Sheriff, I'm glad you're here too, as always. There's a lot going on in town. We're doing, started the throes of a $4 million sewer renovation project. Behind that is another $1.6 million for water renovation and $1.5 million to build a new water tower and dig a new well. So, we're, as Spring Hope said, and as Bailey said, we're growing. And we're more preparing for growth and trying to make sure everything is where it needs to be. We've got a subdivision going in west of town, 121 homes. They'll probably start at $350,000 and go up. But if you go outside of town, there's 102 homes going on NC 231 South. They're in the midst of building 114 homes on Claude Lewis Road. There's already been probably 28 homes built on Dedman Road. I don't know how many more is in that subdivision to be built. We've built 10 homes in the interior here in Middlesex, and I've probably got 10 more lots now, and somebody calling every day. Actually, I'm trying to hold my thumb on the spring sometimes. Growth is great. Controlled growth is butter. We've got a school system in this end of the county that can't sustain the people that are moving here today, let alone the fire and EMS and sheriff's department. That's going to be a real challenge as we move forward, when you start looking at how many homes there are in the southern end of the county and how many they're trying to build. We've got a great group of people here. We've got a great team. It is a team effort. It's a team effort in all three of these towns to be able to put something together. It's not one person. We have some good representatives, Alan Chester, Lucy Stone, they have been very gracious to all these towns, and they're going to continue to do so. So, you know, again, thank you for being here. Thank Freddie. Look forward to working with him. And I appreciate
Thank you, Mayor. And now, the man we've been waiting to hear from, very good friend of mine. He's a family member. I'm glad to see him run. I'm glad to see him grab a lot of the issues that's facing Southern Ash County to have them addressed. Let's give Freddie a warm round of applause while he comes on up.
Before we get started, there's some more folks. Got some empty seats in here, holes in here we can fill in. They want to come in here so they can hear better. Some of y'all, come on in. We got some seats over here against the wall at the back tables.
Got a bench over here holding up four.
Come on in and grab a seat. I think there's a bench over here against the wall as well also. So, I've got a few things to share with you. But we've been fortunate enough not to have Sheriff Keith Stone come. We're running, I'm running a race, and what I'm running on is public safety, first responders, which includes our EMS, our call centers, our sheriff's department, our correctional facility. And before I get into more details, I'd really like you to hear it directly from Sheriff Keith Stone. And like I said, he's got other obligations. I'm going to go ahead and let him speak at this time.
Thank you, and thank you for the welcome. It's a very strong crowd. And this is the part of the county that you need to conserve. And I'm going to be honest with you. I watched a county commissioners meeting last week, and the rhetoric was nine minutes is the average call. I think that's what it is for a person, for you to get help. Let me tell you something. You're in the southern end of this county. Nine minutes might encompass Rocky Mountain where they're close by, and there's stations all around. But I've heard these calls down here, and sometimes it's a drive and a long time. There's no reason you don't have EMS here. Not only is it dangerous for you, but it's dangerous for my deputies too. For when something happens, like one of mine had the car wreck, and they had to do an emergency trach on him to keep him alive long enough for his family to say goodbye to him, and our state troopers out here working and everybody else out here working, and there's no EMS down here. I've talked to the county commissioners until I'm blue in the face, and they have absolutely kept dropping the ball. And I hear that, "Well, I'm just one vote, or I'm this." I've heard nobody stand up and say, "You know something? I'm tired of this." But yet, you can keep putting these large subdivisions in. You've got so much traffic on these roads in the morning. How many of y'all live on rural paved roads? Have you seen the traffic growth grow? Have you looked at the number of vehicles you're meeting on the road and the school buses on the road? Well, look at Johnston County. It's one of the top counties for teen deaths. And it's because the road systems and the infrastructure was not ready for the growth. A few people make a lot of money, and a lot of people suffer. With my office right now, we've got five deputies on it at times, and we feel good about it. One of my deputies is in the back, back here right now. 543 square miles and five deputies working. Couple of weeks ago, I get in the vehicle, armed robbery comes out, and there's a tracker inside of the money bag. They said he's armed with AR-15 rifle. He's on such and such road. If it was not for Governor Cooper's, four officers that he gave us for Governor's Highway Safety, who is supposed to be just working traffic, there would have been about three, or three patrol, regular patrol guys working. Simultaneously, when this happened, and I end up in a car chase myself, there's another call that comes out that EMS is staging and going to a 911 call, but cannot go without a deputy. I don't know if that bothers you, but when I got home, I got to thinking about it. You know, my daughters deserve more than this than to have me out there chasing a felon with a firearm. My deputies are here chasing felons with firearms, and then county commissioners sitting here saying, "You know, everything's fine," or "We can't let you use lap salary." How many of y'all saw, read the Nashville graphic today? Did you see where Nashville PD used lap salary to pay their deputies, I mean, their police officers? You see what Rocky Mountain did? Andre Knight, in a meeting over this casino stuff, asked Chairman Davis about the casinos. He says, "You say that you're in good financial shape." Chairman Davis says, "Yeah, we're in very good financial shape." It was on a video, I think WIG TV, might have videoed it. "We're in good financial shape." Andre Knight, a town councilman, said, "Well, when are you going to start paying our sheriff's office?" We're here today, sitting in here, and I still have that rhetoric. So, this gentleman here comes to me several months ago and says, "Hey, I'm running for county commissioner." I said, "Well, what are you running on?" And he said, "The better this county." I believe it. I see it, and I back you 110% because we got to have people that care. The south end of the county, you deserve an ambulance if one of your loved ones getting a car wreck, or you have a heart attack, or a stroke. Seconds count. And it sure does for my deputies out here roaming around. It's despicable. And when I sit here and went back through the county manager, where she got up and said, "I only have five or six deputy openings, and I've got 15 right now, maybe 14," and she knew what she was saying, and the chairman comes back and says, "Well, it's just a play on words." I don't think your lives are play on words. And that's what we got to change. And thank you for standing up and running. Thank you. Thank you all.
I just wanted to take a second and just tell all of you. I'm humbled at the outturn of support tonight and everybody that's here. I'm truly here to represent you, to be your voice. That's why I'm doing this, for you and for my family as well, and for my children, my grandchildren. People have asked me, "Why am I running?" And beginning to wonder why. Politics is new. It's a little different. But you know, I'm going to sit around and I talk, just like most of you do, about things that happen in the community, and this ain't right, that ain't right. Well, it's one thing, we've got to get more involvement local, or else our local community is going to be like it is on the national community, like you see on television. If we don't start standing up, we know what's right, we know what's wrong. We can have disagreements on things, and we can work them out. But we have a lot more in common than we do different. But we're letting the small majority of the nation dictate to us what we do, and that's going to filter down into our local community. It already has some. And so, it's time for us to take a stand. It's time for us to unite. That's the reason why tonight I asked all the mayors to be here in our district. Because even though each town has its own leadership, we can do a lot more and accomplish a lot more together than we can trying to do it on our own. And example that Sheriff Keystone gave a while ago, I mean, there's a lot of public safety at risk here for our law enforcement. A lot of this EMS situation, we don't realize that it's a problem unless we pick up the phone and dial 911. And it started back with my dad. It wasn't, the EMS was here, but they wouldn't transport you to the hospital you wanted to go to. And that's just gotten worse. That's another whole topic altogether. We want to open the can tonight. But that's kind of what got me started on this and looking into it. And as Sheriff Stone said, the taxpayers of Southern Ash County deserve better. You pay your taxes just like everyone else. We deserve the same service. And our families need to be taken care of, and we need to protect our law enforcement and be able to buy them the resources they need to do their job. So, that's the reason why I'm running. This is a grassroots campaign. We started off 120 days ago. A lot I've learned in politics. When I sat down with some individuals and they said, "Well, this is how much minutes it's going to take to run a campaign." I looked at them and said, "What?" And we've done outstanding so far, 120 days. We, and I say "we" because there's been over 200 contributions to my campaign from within our community. And we've raised over $24,000. And I was, "Wow, that's a lot of money." It is. It's a ridiculous amount of money. But it takes a lot of money to run a campaign. I had no idea until I got involved. Those little flyers that you get in the mail and you look at and say, "Hmm, trash it." They're anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000 apiece by the time you get them sent out across the area because of the postage and to get them printed up. So, signs, and as you know, you've probably seen some of ours got taken, but I mean, they're about $8 apiece for every yard sign you see. And the big ones can go up to $350. So, it adds up real quick. But I do appreciate the support. I'm humbled by it. We've got a lot of momentum going. And I still, to this day, and going forward, I want to be someone that advocates for you and a voice for you. I can't stand here and tell you and promise you that we will get everything we want. I can't stand here and tell you and promise you that we will get everything we want, but what I can tell you is I will speak your voice, I will be your voice, and I'll advocate for what you want. And then I know my daughter was at the door earlier tonight, and she gave everybody index card and the pin, and I just want you to write down any concerns you have, and just turn those back in tonight before you leave, because again, I represent you. And that's what it's all about, is doing what the people of southern Nash County want, not necessarily what the other end of the county wants. We have got a challenge ahead of us, but we've got a huge momentum going. I feel very positive about where we're at. It's not over. I need some help, need to talk to your family, need to talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors, get out and tell them to vote. There's a large majority of people in Nash County that don't vote. They're registered to vote, but they don't vote, and we need them to vote this election. So please, talk to your neighbors, your family, your friends, get them out to vote. We need your support. There's yard signs out front, you're welcome to get them. I'll go ahead and tell you upfront that my opponent may stop by and pay you a visit if you put one up though. He may play the victim to you, and you can't believe after all he's done for this community in town, are you gonna treat him this way and hurt his feelings? But this isn't about feelings, this isn't about attack on Dan Cone. This is about politics and doing what's right for the southern Nash County. And I have nothing against Dan Cone, but he's attached himself with politics, with Robbie Davis, and we all know where that's at, and that's not the politics that southern Nash County needs. It's time for a change, and I think you agree, or you wouldn't be here. So I certainly appreciate your time coming out tonight, and I appreciate the support, and definitely could use your help in spreading the word. There's nothing better than a phone call or a personal visit from a neighbor or friend telling them to get out to vote. That's how we make a difference, and we share the reason why we're doing it. I think it's been clear up here tonight why I'm running. Public safety is the number one thing. You've got my son-in-law Adam and my future son-in-law Nathan, they're both firefighters involved. I've got a family that's been in law enforcement, so I'm pretty passionate about that, and I think it plays a crucial role in our society in protecting us when we have an emergency and a situation we need to pick up the phone and know we can be taken care of and that they'll come. So I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I would like to recognize, I think Middlesex Fire Department has a representative here, and then we've got, Trevor's here, and then Keith Wilder's here too. Do you want to come up, Keith, and say a few words?
Well, good evening, everyone. It's hard acts to follow here, but I'll ask your forgiveness because I found out about five hours ago that I would be representing the fire department tonight. So it sounds like I'm rambling a little bit, it may be because my brain's trying to think of, okay, what was I supposed to say? Before I tell you a little bit about the fire department, my name's Keith Wilder. I've been with Middlesex Fire Department for 31 years. I worked for Raleigh Fire for the last 37-plus years. I will tell you that as a labor leader in Raleigh, and it's no different here in Nash County, I see a lot of elected officials. It's easy for an elected official to stand up and say, "I support public service." That's the easy part. It's, the proof is in the pudding, as they say, right? So you gotta look around and say, "Who says I support it, but who's actually doing something?" So I would just ask you to keep that in mind when you, when you think about your, who you're gonna vote for. When people say they support something, you gotta fact-check that. And they may do a few things for it, but I just want to tell you one fact about the fire department. Many of you may know what the insurance services office is all about, but there's insurance people in the room. When a insurance company calculates their risk model for what you will pay in insurance premiums, whether it's on your house, your car, your boat, your plane, whatever you've got that's domiciled in that area where you register it, you will pay a premium, and the insurance service offices determines a number that is part of that calculation, 1 through 10. 1 is the best fire protection, 10 is no fire protection. Well, keep in mind that without a fire department, if there were no fire department here, we probably wouldn't be able to afford our homes, because our insurers would call those notes due. They would want their money back because they have no coverage to protect them if there's a loss. That's how important the fire department is. And in the volunteer world, you know, volunteerism's down everywhere. We need more people to get involved. We need more people to, especially young people, right Lou? We need more young people. Most of us on the department are getting a little older, but without a fire department, that's what you face. You face your ISO rating going up to a point where we might not even be able to afford our mortgages. But anyway, so I got a few things on my phone I'll be glancing at, but I did want to recognize a couple people that have done some things for us that, when I mentioned, people who actually do, instead of just say that we support public safety, Senator Barnes, Lisa Barnes, and Representative Cheshire, they were a part of getting a huge amount of money for Middlesex Fire Department. I'm not exactly sure if it was exactly $900,000, but it was in that range, which allowed us to replace a frontline apparatus that would be responding to your home as a primary truck that was built in 1997. Now I'll tell you this, in Raleigh, we replace trucks every 12 years. You can't afford to do that in the volunteer world. You have to, you have to nurse those things, you have to get more life out of them. But that grant allowed us to replace that truck as a frontline truck. We also purchased a UTV, which will allow us to do wildland firefighting in a different way. It will allow for some extrication of victims who are, let's say, way off the road, and you need a UTV to try to reach them. A nice trailer to haul it in, which would act as a command center if you absolutely needed to use that. We also got a grant for, and by the way, I use the word "grant" here, we get a lot of grants here in Middlesex, but those grants are not forever. They're not infinite. So we got a grant for our self-contained breathing apparatus. As you know, that's, that's the air pack we wear. Those things have to be replaced on a regular basis. There are standards that say you can't run equipment but so long. Now, standard is like this. Either you adhere to the standard, you adopt it, or you don't. And if you do, great. If you don't, well, what's the harm? Until somebody gets hurt, because the plaintiff's attorney is gonna hold that standard up and say, "This is your industry standard." So when we have all these replacements of things, we are getting grants for them, but I want to tell you about this stuff because, again, at the end of the day, if we don't have a fire department here, if we don't have a functioning fire department, a robust fire department that can keep their ISO rating low, then this is what we face with our insurance premiums. On the other side of the house, we talked about equipment, you know, we built a new station. Obviously, that's gonna have probably 75 years of longevity, but we also got grants for personnel. We talked about services and response times. I know Freddie mentioned that, as did JP and others. Paid staff provide the quickest response time. I think that's a no-brainer, right? And we've done a really good job managing the money that we've been able to get to provide paid staff. So if it's during the daytime and you've had an emergency call, you've probably seen the fire truck was there pretty quickly. Now, we talked about some issues with EMS, yeah, I can't help that, but it's the right thing to do. You know, we could have, we could have focused on other things and spent that money to upgrade all our trucks and keep all brand-new trucks in the house, but instead, we chose to go after grants so we could put people in your house as quickly as possible. See, the public is like this, they don't care whose name is on the door. The first water on the fire is the best water on the fire. The first hands on the chest doing CPR, the best hands on the chest. By the way, that's a plug, learn CPR, because bystanders CPR saves more lives than do responders. But anyway, that's just a brief overview of things we've done with our building, with our equipment, and with our personnel. And on behalf of our chief, Greg Ridley, he couldn't be here tonight, he asked me to stand in, so I appreciate the opportunity to come up and tell you a little bit about our department. And of course, if you have interest, please come down and visit us. Again, we're always needing volunteers. Thank you. So Lou Harvey, I wanted to make a point to tell you that our ISO rating is a four. Again, a one being the best, and you typically see the lower ratings, a one, two, or three in metropolitan areas. Middlesex is a four, which is a pretty darn good rating for a bunch of volunteers.
Come on, man. Come on. I know you're retiring, but come on. Listen, I sincerely do thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I just, I'm got away with words just by the support, and I do appreciate this, and it does go to show how much we all want change and need to change here in southern Nash County. I don't want to be a career politician, by far. My daughters have too much work for me to do on the forum, so I do want to do what I can do for you, and then I want to be able to hand the battalion over to somebody else to take it and run, because to me, you need to run hard. You don't need to sit back, drive the Cadillac, and take it easy, sip coffee. You need to be running hard while you're in there, and then turn around and pass the baton on and go somewhere else, let somebody else take it and run just as hard. That way, the county gets more out of you, and that's what you're here. You're here to serve. You're here to serve the county or state, whatever position you're running for. So I do appreciate this opportunity and the support. I'm looking forward to what's coming, but if I can stress anything tonight, call your neighbors, call your family, talk to your friends, get them out to vote. It makes a difference. Yes, and we can vote early now. The only thing, we gotta drive to Nashville. Mount Pleasant or Spring Hope is not open for early voting this year. It's gonna be Nashville or Rocky Mount are two locations we can do early voting in Nash County this year. Not sure why that happened, but it is what has happened, and that's what we have to work with. So get out early and go vote. It does make a difference. Get everybody involved. If you want to get more involved than just coming tonight, you can see one of my daughters there at the door when you leave tonight. The index card that you're putting in, your concerns on, you can put on there as well that you want to serve, and we'll be more than happily to take you on the campaign team. And we've got a lot of work to do between now and the primary on March the 5th, so absolutely can use all the help we can get. At this time, I'd like, where'd James or JP get to? He disappeared on me. Can somebody gather up JP? But I think he wants to say a few words tonight as well. I'd like to, everybody just still, when JP gets through talking, I want everybody to just get up there. I'd like to see him in it, to thank each of you for coming out and talk to you. There is some food in the other room in there, in the far room, and beverages, it's light refreshments, but help yourself to that. At this time, sir, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you give some closing remarks, and I'm gonna see if I can mingle and try to shake some hands and kiss some babies. That's what I'm told to do anyway.
Well, I had to step outside and spit my chewing tobacco out, but I'm good to go now. But look, seriously, on a serious note, thank y'all for taking the time, the effort to come out and listen to the concerns facing southern Nash County, okay? Remember to vote, tell a friend, share a Facebook post. If you're not following the Nash County Sheriff's Office, you need to. If you're not following Freddie, you need to. And I'm telling you, when he tells you that he's concerned for you to address your concerns or what have you, he means it. Thank y'all for coming. If you need anything, reach out to us, let us know.